Good evening. And it is with great pleasure that I convene and welcome all of you to the special business meeting of the Putnam Valley Board of Education of April 20th, 2021. Let's start by please joining me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This really is my favorite, I do, I say that a lot, but I really do mean it this time. This is my favorite board meeting of the year because we are celebrating and acknowledging the careers of people who helped shape this district and celebrating the careers of people that will continue to shape this district. So it's, it's fun. I love that we do it all together. And Dr. Luff, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I did warn, oh, that's loud. Sorry. I did warn a couple individuals that the retirees have done their time, so they get to go first. The tenure recipients will get, receive tenure after the 115 slide budget presentation. So hold tight. Now, as mentioned, this is certainly the most exciting board meeting of the year for many reasons. Just to see the number of people in this room right now, there's more people in this room than have been at a board meeting collectively for the last two years, which could be a good or a bad thing depending upon how you look at it. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to invite some of my colleagues up to say a few words about each of our retirees. So without further ado, Dr. Nchuri.
Is there not a way to make that a little darker? Do you want to leave the room a little darker on that end or not really? Not cool management. You want us to switch it?
Good evening, everyone. Is Nancy Christopher here?
Yes.
Hi Nancy. So it's my honor tonight to speak about Nancy Christopher, a beloved teaching assistant throughout our district and most currently at the high school. Nancy is just so good natured and she brings cheer to everybody in the school and she's, what she doesn't know is that everybody wants to eat lunch with Nancy. And you know why? Because she is so funny and she keeps people laughing nonstop. And to give you a little example, our first Zoom faculty meeting in March or April of last year, and Nancy was simultaneously taking care of a credit card issue and nobody, she didn't know where the mute button was, so she was reading her credit card number aloud over the Zoom meeting. But you know what? She's so, she takes everything in stride and she laughs right along with us and everybody just loves being around her. And as a teaching assistant, she is incredible. She'll do any task asked of her without complaint, whether it's ride the Bosie's bus back and forth, whether it's to help an individual student, whether it's to be a TA in a class, she does it all. And she's just so responsible, so dependable, and so flexible all the time. And the students love her and she goes out of her way to help them and she will be greatly missed, but I hear she has one new grandchild and one coming on the way. So I wish her all the best in her new adventures as a grandmother. I know it's going to be a wonderful journey, but please know you're going to be missed at Putnam Valley High School.
Nancy, Nancy, can you come up? We have a little gift for you.
Be COVID safe. Go this way. At least you don't have to shake all our hands. We're just friends and stuff.
We'll skip the formal speech part. Okay, now I'd like to invite up Mr. Travis McCarty.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Zoe Sousa. Zoe has been in our district for over 20 years, 14 years at the elementary school. Zoe became, began her teaching career in 2001 and she was hired by Jamie Edelman and Eileen Lapuzo was one of the members of the hiring committee. At the time, she was being considered for two positions. She ended up in a multi-age program called Childside. She ended up teaching first and second grade for four years. She worked closely with Jeannie Barano, Eileen Lapuzo, and Kelly DiBattista at the time. She then moved up to third grade, general education, and taught all subjects for the next 10 years. She worked closely with other third grade teachers, Jen Mastrata, Liz Barrett, Linda Rapaport, and Chris Krill. She also collabed with Christine Akolino for two years. And then she came over to the middle school and we welcomed her with open arms for the last seven years. She's been in fifth grade, math and science. Her first three years she co-taught on a collab team with Joanne Mahoney, continued the same setting in her fourth year with Catherine Dreeson, and in the fifth year welcomed Georgia Somer to the pod. For the last two years, she's been in a general education setting, collaborating with the fifth grade team, and she's recently served as the fifth grade team leader. Fun facts about Zoe. She started her first year teaching when 9/11 occurred and the last year has been this pandemic. So it's been 20 years of adventure, to say the least. One thing I appreciate most about Zoe is her gentle approach and caring approach to all of her students. She took an entire class picture of all of her 20 years, and I think that says a lot about a teacher, especially when you value and remember those that you've taught with and taught altogether. I wish her the best in the next phase of her career. I know she's visiting her mother in England and will enjoy spending time with her daughter and rest of her family. So congratulations to Zoe. Zoe, want to come on up? Congratulations, Zoe. Congratulations. The next person I'd like to recognize is Jody Stein. Jody started her teaching career in the Bronx in 1990, 31 years ago. After working in a 5'8" middle school, she was hired by John Kleinegris in 1993 to help come over and follow a middle school model of five through eight. She earned her first Masters in Childhood Behavioral Science in 1990, following up on a Masters in Counseling in 2006. Jody's been a fifth and sixth grade team leader for over 20 years, been a mentor to many new teachers, and held positions such as middle school head building mentor for two years, facilitated summer orientation workshops for new teachers for five years, and directed the PV Summer Reading Camp. Jody was the original PT Middle School Liaison imagined by Barbara Parmley, helped with parents as reading partners, been a 5'6" ELA coordinator, and was recipient of Pride in Putnam Valley Award for Literacy, and been a presenter at the National Council for Social Studies for Latin America Project. One of her favorite experiences outside of the classroom were the five years she spent with the district's epic parenting coordinator. Those evening workshops were a joy and she has fond memories, and in fact, she brings up that point many times throughout the years. One thing I can say about Jody is she's a lifelong educator, mentor, and colleague. I had the pleasure of working with her on the sixth grade team, and she brings a true motherly approach in everyone that she works with, from her students to her colleagues. And we've benefited from a rigorous and collaborative partnership over the years. Jody looks forward to spending time with her husband, Tom, her daughters, and family, and has a future in educational counseling and consulting, at the very least. I know that she also helps out with Tom's business. She's looking forward to the next stage of her career, and I'm sure we haven't seen the last of Jody Stein. Congratulations. And the next person I'd like to recognize is my secretary, Senior Office Assistant, Christine Wallach. Not sure if Christine is here this evening, but I did, did want to mention she has worked in our district for over 20 years, the majority of that time at the middle school. I want to thank her for her service and caring for our students and families first and foremost. I will truly miss her kindness, ability to problem solve, her sound advice and experience in dealing with and living with and through much change over the years. Her advice and her expertise around the way things were done was greatly appreciated. Christine was always up for a Wednesday dress theme, loved Halloween and dressing up. When I came into administration, the one thing she first said to me was, "Please let our middle school students dress up for Halloween," and that was an easy yes for me. As middle school students enjoy that. She brought a sense of family to our main office and she did share with me in one of the, she is retired now, in one of the last few days, that this has been the most unpredictable and ever-changing year of her career. I want to thank her for sharing her journey with us. She'll be missed but never forgotten. Christine looks forward to spending time with her husband, Brian, her new dog, Daisy Pearl, her granddaughter, Sophia, and has a future, I'm sure, in flipping houses and interior design. So congratulations to Christine Wallach.
Dr. Podesta.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see so many people here together. I'm going to start by recognizing a retiree, Sharon Redman, a teaching assistant. I don't believe I've seen her here. She's here. Yay, hi Sharon. Sharon, I'm so glad you're here because we are so proud and honored to celebrate your career. Sharon has been here since 2001, so that's 20 years if you do the math. She has worked in all grades K through 4 and in New Horizons. Sharon brings such an energy to her classroom. She individualizes for every student and her goal in every day is to leave everything at the door, walk in and give 100%. And Sharon, that's what you do every day. Sharon is willing to help out anywhere she's needed and we know that could be anywhere in the building at any point. She wants to make children as independent as possible and to treat each individual in the best way in order to preserve their dignity and reach for the highest goals. Sharon shares her love of children and her staff members in all that she does, and she says that she has learned from every single child she has worked with. She has served on the building steering committee for several years, and she has added a professionalism and just an overall energy that makes such an impact on a building and on the New Horizons program this year. Sharon, we're going to miss you so much. Congratulations. Our next person we'd like to recognize in her retirement is Mrs. Lisa Hernandez. Mrs. Hernandez started in Putnam Valley in the 1994-95 school year. She taught kindergarten and ran a reading support program that she created for struggling kindergarten readers called LEAP, Literature, Experience, and Practical. This was modeled after fieldwork in New Zealand and recognized by the New York State Promising Practices Board. She taught in the Childside Program, multi-age, grades one and two. She went to first grade for several years, and this year she goes back to kindergarten. So it's a full circle, and she's a wonderful kindergarten teacher and a wonderful grade level coordinator. She will remember the collegiality of staff and all that can happen when staff work together with variety shows, performances, helping staff in need, and approaching academic challenges as in this year's pandemic. As she looks forward to retirement, she looks forward to the beach, hiking, forest appreciation, yoga, reading, writing, painting, and anything she hasn't learned yet. Lisa brings humor and love to all that she does. She sends, she sends email in purple font at all times, and she wants the best for every child that she meets. Congratulations, Lisa. We will miss you.
I was hoping the kindergartners didn't do that.
That is a very recent injury, so she's a quick healer as well. And then we have Mrs. Teresa Haybisen. Mrs. Haybisen has many staff members and friends here tonight, which represents who she is as a person and as a colleague. Mrs. Haybisen did not want to give me her picture for tonight, and she actually said no to her principal when I asked. However, Mrs. Haybisen has friends who have photos of her, so she's right there on the Mrs. Haybisen's career spans over 30 years at PVES. Through all of these years, she has given her very best each and every day. She's been here 34 years, right Teresa? 23 years in kindergarten, 11 years in first grade, and most importantly to note, 18 years in collab. She has had one collab teacher for the past 18 years, Mrs. Melissa Faloon, who of course is here tonight and who really is losing her right arm and probably her best friend. Together, Teresa and Melissa create a classroom that is warm, structured, with high standards, and all children can go in there, reach their highest goals, and perform their best. There is no doubt that a child with challenges will go into that classroom and come out successful and loved. And I do believe that Mrs. Haybisen has added so much to this first grade team. She has humor. Mid-year, last year present, we moved her into the library in January. She's adaptable, flexible, and she's a wonderful teacher. Looking forward to retirement, she said she's going to sleep in on Mondays because there will be no faculty meetings. Congratulations, Teresa. Teresa would like to say a few words. We're really going to miss all of you. Our final retiree at the elementary school is not here tonight, but I do hope he's watching, Mr. Mick Coleman. Is he here? He's here? Oh, he's watching. Mr. Mick Coleman retired in January and he is so missed. He was born in the Bronx, I'm going to start from the beginning, okay? He was born in the Bronx, moved to Kent, and he was hired in Putnam Valley in 1990. When Mick came to Putnam Valley, he taught third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade in Math AIS. Seven years ago, he came over to the elementary school to the math, to be the Math AIS teacher. And I cannot state strongly enough how much he changed our building, our program, and the success of our students in the area of math. Mick teaches with energy, charisma, and a connection to children. His greatest takeaway is that when you build relationships, you can teach them anything and they will rise to high standards. Make your expectations high and the children will get there. Mick has been my friend during these seven years and I miss him on a daily basis. Nobody else jumps up and down when you're talking to them. And nobody else leaves your office saying, "Well, they have to pass the test." But he meant that with the warmest efforts that he gave to all children and all teachers when he did demo lessons in math, shared his expertise, and shared his love of learning and teaching. Mick and his wife Kristen planned to move into their new home and spend lots of time with their first granddaughter who will be arriving in May. Mick and Kristen have their three beautiful daughters, one of course Kendall, who works for us in the Putnam Valley School District. Mick served as chairman of the Welfare Trust for, Welfare Trust Committee, I guess, for 15 years. He also ran a math enrichment club for us, and as he looks into retirement, he's pursuing his ongoing and successful acting career. Look for him in the movies. He's a wonderful teacher and Mick, we will miss you always. Congratulations.
Now I'd like to welcome Mr. Michael Koenig. Thank you.
Hello, and as you see, I have no computer, no paperwork. So like, like my whole entire career here in Putnam Valley as a student, I forgot my homework. So the dog ate it. So what I'm going to do is just speak just from my heart and from my, you know, about my employees that are leaving. First off is Debbie Parsons. Debbie Parsons started in Putnam Valley, I believe, in the year 2000. She started driving for Putnam Valley. She had drove for a contractor before, so she was very familiar with, they lived in town. But as most of us know that we, and the district drivers, they drive some of the most difficult students, the students that are the most challenging, you know, going to down county, across the river, different places. And some of the most challenging ones are usually the ones that I go on, that go on Debbie's bus because Debbie has a skill set, a skill set that she can, she can, she can be the most loving and caring to the thing, and sometimes these kids, that's what they need. They need somebody that cares about them, that loves them, that talks to them and, and cares about them. And, and she could do that. She could do that with the best of them. But then she also has, when it's time, because some of them, they want to test that level and see how far they can push you and see, and sometimes they need, they're looking for the discipline. She can come down like a, like a hammer. She definitely, raising four girls, I think she, she learned how to put it down and she, she definitely does. And in that way, I have very, I never had problems with any of the students on there. The students love her and never have any kind of issues. And if they go on not doing too good, they usually, within a couple of weeks, are loving the bus and riding and issues go away. A little bit about her is something that I always find amazing is if I ever got stuck on an island or if I have to live off the grid, I think she is probably one of the persons that I would want with me because she seems to know a little bit about plumbing, electric, gardening, carpentry. I mean, it's just absolutely amazing. She is like a do it yourself person on top of, I mean, it's amazing. She'll come in and be like, "Oh, look at this, at this kitchen table I built with my daughter, you know, in the basement the other day." And I mean, it's like you could sell this thing like top line, or she'll come in and she'll be like, "Oh, I rewired this, the light switch wasn't working." But also it's the, she's always looking for the knowledge, so sometimes she doesn't know and she's asking you, "How do you do this? How do you do that?" And she doesn't want you just to go and do it for her. She wants you to explain how you're going to do it so that the next time she can fix it herself. And that comes through sometimes on the bus. There's been instances where, I mean, she'll have a wheelchair bus and call up and say, "The wheelchair lift won't come, go up, but I got it. I took a paper clip and I shorted out the sixth relay to the thing and, and it got it to go up and on my way back." And I'll be like, "Okay, you're on your way back? Good, okay, see you later." So she's always managed to solve problems. And I know she's going to be going, like I said, she's got wonderful grandchildren and I'm sure her daughter's going to have her building a lot more furniture and cabinetry. So I hope she enjoys her retirement well, well deserved. And now the next one. This one's a little, so Lori Cara, who is, was a driver, started here in, I believe, 1992. So she's got 30, almost 30 years of driving and also, she's also my assistant in the office. And I could sit here and say, "Oh, you know, she's great, reliable and all this other stuff," but there's a lot more to it. In 2003, I, I was put into the, or I was asked or went for the position of supervisor and when I did that, they asked me for somebody to come in, also as an assistant, to fill in when I'm not there or in the hours that I'm not working. And, you know, so I, I looked around and I, and one of the, who was the driver, Lori, who always, she was reliable, she was very knowledgeable about the district and caring about the kids. She fit all those, those things and, and she was also very trustworthy. So it was somebody that I said, "Okay." I think, so I approached her and said, "Is there something you would like to do?" And she said, "Yes." Well, I think that of all the things I've done going on 20 years, I think that was my best by far decision I ever made. Lori is, you know, we, we have teams. We, we build like a thing, Robin and, you know, Batman and Robin, like, you know, as a team and stuff like that, we, you build and you, and you build your, your thing. I don't know how to explain it, but anyhow, I, there's so much that goes into transportation. Transportation is, and there's these tasks that sometimes, special ed, not to point fingers at all, will ask you to do the impossible, whether it's picking up a kid and down here, adding another student on over here, and there's a lot of different moving parts. Said there was moving parts, there's a puzzle. And, you know, everybody approaches me and says things and, you know, sometimes I feel bad about it because they'll say, "Oh, you're a miracle worker." No, I'm not. It's the team. It's me and her, taking and sitting down and coming up with a problem, figuring out how to solve these problems and, and bouncing them back and forth. "Okay, this will work. This won't work." "Yes, this will work." And some of the challenges, you know, over the years have been big challenges, you know, like sometimes superintendent comes to you and says, "Oh yeah, I want to bring two schools in at the same time, at the same, you know, on the same bus, but you can't have any more buses."
That was the previous superintendent, right?
Oh, okay.
Just wanted to clarify.
I don't think I was on the board either.
So, you know, these are problems. Now you have to redo all your runs. Well, you know, you gotta sit down and you gotta just redesign everything from scratch. And that requires a team. And she's half of that team, you know? This year was, last year was COVID, you know? You, we're going to start back up again, but, you know, we got only a certain amount of buses, so it was redesign all those runs all over again, keep the same times, things like that. So these are all things that I, you know, I, every day it gets closer and closer because we're getting closer and closer to June. You know, I'm excited about the end of the year, but with that scares me. It really does. It scares me because I'm losing half of my team. I'm going out there, you know, it's like having all your players and saying, "Okay, no, half of them are on the bench. You can only play this game with half your thing." You know, and I'm hoping that the replacement is good, but it's, those shoes are going to be huge, huge to fill because really, really Lori Cara brought 110% to this district and is truly going to be missed. And I hope she, you know, still stays around and comes around and keeps in contact, but I'll truly, truly, truly miss her.
Thank you. Just going to quickly invite Mr. McCarty back up to the mic.
Good evening again. So on behalf of Natalie Doherty and our Special Education Department, I would like to congratulate Carolyn Piscuali on retiring this school year. Carolyn raised her two children in Putnam Valley. She is a proud grandmother, caring and compassionate. She taught Wilson with many struggling readers over the years, and helped children to appreciate books. She had the ability to find students' strengths and gave them confidence. I had the pleasure of working with Carolyn. She's been in the district roughly 20 years. Back in 2004, when she was my co-teacher, and one thing that I can say about Carolyn is she was compassionate in everything that she gave students and staff here. Carolyn would come with an issue or a concern, and she just was looking for guidance as to help support those students further, and she cared for them first and foremost. And Carolyn has, like I said, gone from Wilson reading at the middle school to co-teaching, to even achieve classes within the middle school in various grade levels, and most recently, you know, is still working in the special ed department within the district. And I do know that Carolyn couldn't make it this evening, but I do want to congratulate her on her retirement. Congratulations, Carolyn.
So unfortunately, Dr. Doherty couldn't be here this evening, but I do want to recognize one other retiree from our district office, Tony Poe Zangara. It's a tough one. But Natalie wrote a little something, so I want to read on behalf of Tony. So Tony and I have worked together for many years. She's always brought a sense of calmness to families when they needed support, thoughtful to staff when they needed assistance, and has always provided outstanding support to the CSE, CPSC chairperson and me. I wish Tony well in the next phase of her life, and I look forward to hearing all about the adventures she and Keith do in their retirement. So congratulations, Tony. I just wanted to personally extend my gratitude and appreciation to all of our retirees for your many, many years. I tried to keep track of the years, but they're too hard. Many years of service to the students of Putnam Valley, and I know you will all be deeply missed by all of us. So a round of applause to everyone.
And on behalf of the board, I would like to echo Mike Koenig and say, there are big shoes out there that are going to be filled. I wasn't trying to count years. I was trying to count number of children that the people who are retiring touched, and it has to be well into the thousands. I am not a math teacher, I need McCoeman here, but the, not only was it the number of children that are touched, but think of all the teachers and bus drivers and teachers' aides that you've helped mentor to do your job as you return. A good leader replaces themselves. That's what you're all doing, and from all of us up here, congratulations and thank you, thank you, thank you. Get a little emotional at retirement.
So just a quick aside, Ms. Ruffel kicked me, she's got long legs, and said that we cannot do the budget presentation first, so. I'm going to see if that was one of my teachers popping. He can still change that. So just, what's quickly going to happen is we're going to change the order of the agenda. That'll give us a chance to recognize the 15 tenure recipients. When we're done with that, what we'll do is we'll take a quick break, a little recess, give you a chance to take some photos. I know people want to be able to say hellos and goodbyes, and so we'll take a recess that'll give you a chance. If you would like to stay for the budget presentation, you're more than welcome. I'll cover my eyes. If you run out, I'll never know.
Dr. Love tried to make it a condition of tenure, but we said we could not do that.
As long as you go vote wherever you live, then it's okay. Okay, I do want to recognize again, just a couple things. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we typically have a reception prior to this meeting, and it's really an opportunity to celebrate both our retirees and our tenure recipients. For obvious reasons, we were not able to do that this year. We certainly hold out hope that we will still have an opportunity to recognize both our retirees and our tenure recipients, but we're not quite sure when that's going to happen, or when we'll be able to do that. So when we get to the agenda pieces, and you're recognized, then we'll ask you to sort of stand and be recognized. If you want to sort of stand with whoever family members you brought with you, they're also welcome to join. We'll skip the prerequisite formal speeches, and we'll just keep moving along. Sound good? Thanks.
Okay. So we're just going to pick up on the business?
Yeah, motion to change.
Okay. Yeah, I'd first like to make a formal motion to change the agenda item and move right into the first 15 items of new business.
Sure.
Does that mean second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And you want to kind of open it up before we go and teach individual one, or was that your opening?
That was my opening, but I'll make up another one.
That's good, I wasn't sure. Sorry, got confused. All right. Moving on. It's a number one. Mr. Ferrara?
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Travis McCarty be granted tenure in the area of middle school principal at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective July 1, 2021.
Questions or comments? We, there are 15 of you, it's going to be very hard to say something to every, each individual one. Many of us have watched your careers develop. I hope you were all watching the 15 people that we just, or the 13 people that we watched get tenure. Travis, I saw you start. My leave replacement year was your first year, and here we are in different roles. So congratulations. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you. And thank you to McCarty Children for sharing him with us.
I thought you were walking right up to the mic. I was like, wow. That's impressive.
He's going to start singing.
Moving on to number two. Mrs. Yetter?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Leslie Castellanos be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got to do another 30 years, and then he could walk up and get a clock.
But thank you for standing up, so we knew which one of you out there, masks make it so difficult. Number three, Mr. Cohen.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Karen Schmidt be granted tenure in the area of speech at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Melissa Whipple be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Teresa Vork be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 28, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Georgiana Soma be granted tenure in the area of special education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? I can't help myself. Mr. McCarty, when you first started, as you well know, Georgia was a seventh grade student. So just want to put some things in perspective. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on recommendation, superintendent of schools that Karenza DeCiana be granted tenure in the area of English at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a fun meeting. Number eight.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Adele Foster be granted tenure in the area of English at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask that one person stay back and clap during the budget presentation?
Number nine.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Paul Pearson be granted tenure in the area of LOTE, language other than English, at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe we can do a quick variety show, Mr. Pearson, since you seem to be in all of the skits.
All right, go on.
Number 10.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Catherine Shuts be granted tenure in the area of English at Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 21, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Carrie Sullivan be granted tenure in the area of math at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Patricia Saffo be granted tenure as a teaching assistant in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on recommendation, superintendent of schools that Jamie Jeskey be granted tenure as a teaching assistant in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 7, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Jessica Cruz be granted tenure as a teaching assistant in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective October 2, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools that Kelly Wilson be granted tenure as a teaching assistant in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective November 7, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So I just want to extend a general congratulations to everyone, unlike the retirees, you guys have to keep coming back. This group is very special to me. Actually, many of them started in Putnam Valley four years ago, when I did, and one of my first sort of orders of business was to plan a new teacher orientation, which was very exciting when you have a large group of new teachers. Lately, less exciting with one teacher or two. But again, I want to congratulate you all, and I look forward to working alongside you for many years to come. Congratulations.
Is this where the promised break is?
What'd you say?
Is this where the promised break comes in?
Yes, this is when the promised break comes in. So we're going to break for 10 minutes, socially distance, congratulate each other, and again, feel free, the budget presentation is truly riveting. Feel free. Okay, and welcome back after our short recess. We are going to move back into the agenda with number two under the presentations, the Putnam Northwestern Westchester Boces vote trustee candidates, and 2021, 2022 administrative budget.
So for this one, there's no formal presentation. Later in the board meeting, we'll be asking the board to vote on Putnam Northwestern Boces annual budget for this year, and also for candidates. They do have two seats vacant, and two individuals that are running, Catherine Lilborn and Michael Simkins are running for the Boces Board of Education.
And they're both on the board now. They're both currently members.
And this is the reason why we have our meeting on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday, because all the districts have to take this vote to death.
So it will be in the resolution later in the meeting. All right. Now, moving on to our 2021, Putnam Valley's 2021, 2022 proposed budget.
So with that, I'd like to welcome Jill Figarella up for Budget Version 3.
So, good evening. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to go over some of the points we made about the budget in the last couple of meetings. At the last meeting, we adopted the budget, so although it says proposed budget there, it really is adopted at this point. So just to point out the budget goals this year, of course, we would like to make sure that our budget adequately staffs our buildings and supports our academic program. It shows support for curriculum alignment and revision work, provides staff members with the professional development they need, whether it's in district or out of district, also gives the emotional support for the well-being of our students, also, you know, making purchases for hardware and software relative to our district plan and replacement cycle that we have for our laptops and Chromebooks, and of course, develop a responsible budget that meets the overall needs of our district as a whole, and, you know, sustains the appropriate PPE cleaning supplies and whatnot that we need to keep our students and staff safe. To review the staffing for next year, any changes? We are, we are, we have in the budget right now a library media specialist that will be replacing the library clerk that we currently have in that position, and that would be at the middle school. We have a special education teacher at the high school in the budget. Of course, that is dependent upon the schedule. Once we've developed a schedule, it determines whether or not we need that position. We have a point two, which makes one of our point eight teachers a 1.0 teacher at the elementary school, and that teacher also happens to have ENL certification, so that will fulfill another need that we have. And then we have also in the budget a possible, we may need another ENL certified teacher, and that's been added to the budget. Well, not added since last time, but that's included in the budget that we've already adopted. And then the retired- And then the retirements, you saw them all this evening, we had seven teachers over this year, two teaching assistants, one monitor, two bus drivers, and two office assistants. So there are some things that have been added to the budget and some things that have been removed from our current budget. I want to go over where our money comes from in the budget. We have local non-tax resources that includes our debt service reserve. So from our debt service reserve, we have a million dollars coming from there to support our payments for debt, that's our principal and interest that we have to pay on capital projects, and capital projects are over 30 years, so there's other projects in there, not just the current project that's going on. The other tax resource, the other non-tax resources would be our interest, our tuitions, our, so our interest earnings, our tuitions that we get in, our refund of prior year's expenses through, from BOCES or other vendors. Then we have our state aid, our state aid, it makes up about 11.6 million dollars of our revenue. We have a tax cap that has allowed us to have a real property tax levy of 38.7 million dollars, that is a 1.96% change from last year, or from the current year to next year. And then to fill the rest of the gap in that revenue need is our appropriated fund balance and reserves, and that makes up about 2.4% of our, of our budget. The total budget being 53,196,449, a budget to budget change of 2.48%. So for, on the expenditure side of that, we have our general support portion of the budget, that's our administrative costs, our insurance, our operations and maintenance, and the office, general support of the administrative offices, district and, and business office, 4.9 million. Our instruction, which is the largest part of our budget, covers all of our teachers, our, our staff, anything related to instruction, special education, guidance, psychologists, behaviorists, speech, and, and anything that touches instruction, that's 29.6 million dollars. Our transportation cost, that includes our contractor and our in-district transportation-related expenses, that's 3.2 million dollars. Our benefits and debt service, benefits being workers' compensation, health insurance for employees, and pension plans, and our cost for principal and interest on our debt service is 15.3 million dollars. Again, the total budget being 53,196,449, that is the amount of the budget that we will be putting on the ballot, on the proposition for voting on May 18th. So again, this is just another way of looking at where the cost of the, where the expenditures go. We have 41.6% of our budget going towards classroom instruction, we have 22.8% going towards employee benefits, 8% going towards general administrative support, 6.1% going towards transportation, 4.9 goes towards support services, 5.2% goes towards operations and maintenance, 6.1 towards debt service, and then 2.9 towards media and tech support, with 2.4% going towards co-curricular and athletics. Just another way of looking at, instead of dollars, we're looking at percent of what, how much the budget is for each of those categories. This is a summary of our budget, it's a more detailed, I'm not going to get into this on here, I can barely see it here, but online, you can see it quite clearly if you go to our website, and this gives a better breakdown of those categories. In fact, if you, I think I can go to it here, this is our website, on the homepage, clicking on budget information, and following that to our proposed budget document, you will come to our complete document, it is about 18 pages long, it gives the summary page that I just showed you, and then every line in the budget, so that, you know, you can see the breakdown, the complete breakdown of the budget. For anybody who would like to take a look at that, it is available on our website. I think I can close it here. Nope. Okay. I need you to restart that for me.
We're not up to any questions?
What's that?
So we're not ready for any questions?
I'm not done.
She's not done yet? She's only up to slide eight.
I just lost my slides.
He closed the whole browser.
Jeremy, can't hear me back.
I think Jeremy did it remotely, so.
I accept fully.
Thank you. I'll get me there. Thanks. Okay. So that was a, a version of the detailed budget that would give you a line-by-line breakdown of those larger numbers that I, that I talked about. Again, this is our eight-year tax rate history, I'm not going to go over each and every year, but each and every year, we were below the tax cap, the allowable tax cap, after completing the formula, and right now, our proposed tax rate is about $26.10 per thousand, and you can see that rate, two years ago, we were very similar rate, and before that, it was, it was higher. Our tax levy proposal is, or adopted tax levy that's in the budget, is 1.96% increase from, from the current year. In 21, 22, we're lower than the New York State allowable cap again, our allowable cap was at 2.1%, we're at 1.96. This is the 10th consecutive year that Putnam Valley schools have had a tax levy that was under the allowable cap, and the tax levy is the amount of money that the district needs to meet the demands of the budget, so I was explaining that when we were going over the revenues. The tax levy is the piece that we use to develop, we develop from the formula that the state gives us, and then we had to close that gap with some use of our reserves. But the tax rate represents how much per thousand dollars of assessed value that individuals will pay on their home, and according to your assessment and your local equalization rate, and it is different by each town, it's set by New York State, those rates can, can change slightly between now and July 1st, which is the taxable assessed deadline date for the town to submit everyone's assessment. There is a slide on here about understanding how we develop the tax cap, the 38.7 million dollars. If someone would like to run through this or get more explanation about this, I can certainly help them. The formula dictates to us how much the, the cap can be. Right now, we're about $24,000 under the allowable cap. Also, I want to go over what happens if a budget is not passed on the first try, the board may put up a revised, it's called a contingent budget, or the board can decide to put up a different budget. So the board can put up a revised budget before the voters again, and that would happen in June, and if they adopt a contingent budget, that would mean that the tax levy would have to revert to the prior year's amount, and for Putnam Valley, that would mean $745,000 in cuts. Contingency budget has to exclude any expense that's not tied directly to the day-to-day operations of a school district for regular instruction, and the board, of course, would be, would have to use its best judgment in determining what those contingent expenses are. So if a budget fails in Putnam Valley, it could mean cuts in many different areas of the budget, particularly program and personnel, which obviously would not be good. The voter information, our vote is on May 18th, I'm going to have Maureen come up to the microphone and give a, a better.
This year's budget vote is an in-person budget vote, not like last year, no one will be receiving ballots at their homes unless they request one, and that's through an application process. The application can be obtained by calling me at the district office, Maureen Bolino, or going on the district website, and the applications are available to be filled out. If you're fearful of coming out due to COVID, temporary illness is a box you would check, and you would be eligible to receive a ballot. But no ballots can be mailed after May 11th, you would have to come into the office to pick it up and drop it off at that point. So if that's something you're concerned about, you'd need to do that in the short term. We have a voter registration link online to see whether or not you're registered, there's a form online you could fill out and send into the county, or you can come into the district office any business day between 8:00 and 4:00, and we can register you. We have two candidates running for the two open board seats this year, Barbara Parmley, the incumbent, is running again, and we have a candidate by the name of Helen Horvitz, who's also running for candidacy. If you have any questions, just don't hesitate to call me at the district office. Thank you.
So again, the vote is going to be held in person, it is only by absentee ballot if you request one, it's quite different than what we experienced last year. Would not like to see the, the voters not come and voice their vote for the, the school budget, because they think that the voting was the same as last year, it's not. It's not being done by absentee ballot only, and I think that people need to make sure they understand that.
The vote's at the elementary school, correct?
Yep, it's at the elementary school on May 18th, I believe the regular hours will be between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. I will add that to the slide. Does anybody have questions about the presentation, the budget itself, contact information?
This is presentation number three or four.
Not a registered voter, you have to register by May 4th.
May 13th.
May 13th, okay, I'm sorry.
And high school seniors and juniors, if you're 18, you should register to vote.
They will be eligible.
Not that you're watching, but. And we'll see this one more time at the budget hearing.
So there will be a budget hearing on May 4th, and we will see this, or a version of this, again, to keep people up to date on the budget information.
And as you said, it's on the website, and if anybody has any questions, they can contact anybody on the Board of Education.
Yep, and the business office is available, I'm available, Dr. Luft is available for questions anytime during the week.
So rather than ask Facebook, ask people who know.
Correct.
Jill, when will the mailing go out?
So you're talking about the newsletter?
Yeah.
It cannot go out less than six days prior to the hearing? Oh, received in the, in their mailboxes, no less than six days before the vote, before May 18th. So we're going to get it out as soon as we can. We can't send it out, I think there's a, we can't send it out. Yeah, there's a timeframe that they can't receive the budget notice before, so I'm going to say it's going out within the next 10 days, so they should see it soon.
It's a close window, it always is.
Yeah, there's a window of opportunity for us to mail it and not to, and not to get it there any later than, so it, you know, we have to get it to the printer, and so we're, we're in the process of doing that all now, and closing those gaps.
Ms. Cohen, do we have to, we have one more board meeting, do we have to designate board members to open and close the vote, or we'll do that next one with the budget hearing? Okay, great. Thank you, Mike.
That's why he stayed.
Don't you love Mike?
I promise not to cut any money from the transportation budget if he did that.
Maybe we have to make an amendment and add something.
Well, that's what happens when you get a new contract for the, the bus vendor.
Okay. All right, there are no special business meetings, so there's no student representative reports. Dr. Luft?
So mine's pretty quick. I do want to acknowledge, many of us were invited, the first group of IB candidates gave their CAS presentations, creativity, activity, and service, so they started this Monday and will continue for the next few weeks. I know the Board of Education was invited to participate as well, and it's really the students sort of sharing their culmination, presentation about their work they've done in CAS. These last two make less sense because we already did them, but I did want to recognize our retirees and thank them for their many years of service, and also congratulate our tenure recipients, both of those have already happened. Quick highlights, the New York State Department of Health did publish some new guidance, long-awaited new guidance, just some quick highlights, and I know we shared this in our last communication. There was a change of social distancing in classrooms, student to student, from six feet to three feet, there's no longer the recommendation of the use of barriers, although we still will be utilizing those desk barriers in some locations, lunch where students are eating, classrooms where students, multiple students are sitting at the same table, and other applications, but as a general, general rule, the barriers are especially, specifically the face shields are no longer required. The state did change the social distancing requirements for chorus band and gym from 12 feet down to six. They reemphasized the mask requirements, certainly in terms of mitigation strategies, mask wearing is the most proven, proven to be the most effective, so the state definitely emphasized that mask wearing is, continues to be a requirement. There's certainly lots of concerns about social distancing at lunch or other opportunities where students are maskless, the restrictions remain at six feet in those instances. There was a follow-up guidance that was released about gatherings, it unfortunately limits indoor gatherings to still 150 attendees, and that includes testing, and outdoor gatherings, 200 attendees without testing, 500 with. Now, I have no way of knowing whether that'll change or not before we reach prom and commencement season, but those are, in fact, the rules for schools at this point in time. And I do know that the high school is working with their senior class to determine how to best sort of celebrate those accomplishments within their rules. Spring season for sports began on Monday of this week for high school students and next Monday for middle school students. Just a reminder, guests are limited to per athlete, we will be running our late school bus again, as long as students are taking advantage and riding on the bus, and just a sort of public service announcement to continue with the health and safety protocols. We sent a memo home to families, just asking them for information regarding opting in or out of state assessments, obviously that information we've already received, and buildings have followed up with more detailed information for what that means. Obviously, this year presents a unique challenge for having a group of students doing one thing while another group is doing another, considering the COVID protocols and social distancing that needs to be in place. Our health and wellness center, you may have noticed, final grading work has begun along with a new courtyard design here at the high school, we anticipate in the next two weeks, if weather cooperates, that work will be done. Mr. Spittle and myself did a walkthrough of the site again yesterday with a landscape architect from the community, who is volunteering his time and expertise to help us determine where the plantings, the trees, and, and other shrubbery will go, once the grading work is complete. Vaccination appointments continue to be available, I share them with the district and more recently with our senior class, anybody who's 18 is eligible to get any of the vaccines. For, for, I guess, sort of another public service announcement for our senior class, if you do a quick math, the Pfizer vaccine, five weeks later, you're fully vaccinated, that gets you fully vaccinated before your prom and before commencement, so if you don't have to worry about being quarantined or being tested prior to those events, vaccination is an easy way out of those too. Another thing to check out for our graduating seniors, I think every night on the news, I see more and more colleges are requiring vaccinations prior to the fall semester, so that again, would work in your favor to be vaccinated now and be prepared before entering school. 16 and 17-year-olds are also able to be vaccinated, they're limited to the Pfizer vaccine, the state is only shipping Pfizer to the state-run pods at this point in time. We did a little research over in Rockland, Rockland Community College, I believe, had appointments today, available and more over the next few days, so if you have a 16 and or 17-year-old who's interested in being vaccinated, the state website will direct you to state-run pods, and Rockland was the nearest one that had available Pfizer vaccines as of this morning, although I would anticipate more appointments opening up at the Westchester County Center, which is another state-run pod. And then just to be on the lookout for our high school's spring virtual musical, The Drowsy Chaperone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luft. All right, we are, there is nothing else in the new business. It was just a 15, 10-year candidate. So moving on to the consent agenda.
Were there any comments on agenda items?
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry. I forgot something. Are there any comments from the public on any of the agenda items? No letters, whatever those are called, emails?
Letters?
It's been a long meeting. All right, now, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Resolved on the recommendation to superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda items two through 11, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second?
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE, CPSC placements. We're approving the vote for the Bosse's two candidates, Catherine LeBurne and Michael Simkins. We're approving the Putnam Valley Bosse's budget for the 2021-22 year of $92,276,000, of which our initial contribution, or our initial charge, is $252,460, an increase of about 2.5%. There could be additional charges, depending on how many students take care, use the services. We're approving additional work hours for 11 staff members who did work with parents, who worked with the transition of students from the middle school to the high school, for back-to-school presentations, for the IB chemistry, working with the IB chemistry students, for them to work on their projects. We're approving a change order for the capital project, which includes approximately $20,000 for electrical work, and for sprinkler systems, and for the doors, the extension doors, and some wall padding. We're approving additions to the substitute tune list. We're approving the spring coaches for baseball, softball, boys and girls golf, for boys and girls across, for boys and girls track and field. We're accepting the resignation of a part-time school bus monitor, who is also a school monitor, who will be taking on additional responsibilities as a school monitor, thus will not be able to do the bus monitoring anymore. We're approving the hiring of our lawyer, Shaw Pearson May and Lampert, for next school year, and we're accepting bids for work on the middle school bathrooms and toilets.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can't believe we're winding down the number of meetings that there are left. Our next meeting is May already. That's pure crazy. Do we have any topics? Obviously, one more budget presentation, but what do you see coming up?
Correct. So May 4th is our final budget hearing, and we have a high school IB work presentation planned that evening. On May 20th, we have highlights for special area teachers, with Ms. Mastretta, and an update on the anti-racism committee. And on June 3rd, we have KGND scheduled for their five-year facilities plan. Any recommendations or requests?
I sat on a workshop that Bosse's had a few weeks ago regarding where their budget goes to, everything that's involved in it, and it was very informative. So if they were able to present to us, so our community would know what's included in the Bosse's budget, I think that would be helpful. As, as long as it doesn't cost us for them to come here and give us the presentation.
They, they've done it in the past. I mean, every so often, they've done a presentation.
Usually, when they have a capital project to do.
Right.
But it's very informative. And during the meeting, there was a lot of questions regarding our Mandarin programs, so.
The Mandarin programs?
Yeah, they, other districts wanted to know how we were using Bosse's for it, so.
And since we are approaching May, we should be thinking about if we're going to schedule early or later planning retreat, if we're going to be doing it earlier in the year, earlier in the summer, or at the end of summer, or somewhere in between.
You know, I would, I would like to have, I know we're going to have another new board member on the board this summer, so I was already thinking about it. I was going to reach out to a colleague to schedule a time to facilitate a board retreat, so I was actually thinking about it today. And once I know their availability, I'll work with the board to determine what dates work for everyone to do something.
And we'll have a new curriculum person as well.
What is that timeframe, Dr. Luft? Will we expect to appoint before the end of the school year?
Yeah, so what we did was, I worked backwards from what I hope to be an appointment on the May 4th meeting, just figuring if they're appointed on May 4th, that gives them time to give notice 30 days and then still be able to begin in July, which is ultimately our timeline. And it gives us a buffer. If we don't make the 4th, we can still do May 20th, and that would still hopefully get us done. So the posting closes on Friday. We have well over 60 applicants. We may be in the 70s at this point in time. So we've solely been screening the resumes. We're putting together a screening committee, and then we'll go to our full interview committee, which includes the interview part and the presentation part. So all of that work is being done now, as Ms. Mastretta helps with the transition before she deserts us. So more information.
We're going to make her work very, very hard during this process.
Sorry, is that too harsh of a word?
It was a little, little bit.
It's fine. It's good.
Okay. And the public is invited. Do we have any emails, or letters, or smoke signals about anything? Okay. At this point, I'd like to resolve to convene an executive session for the discussion of two matters of current and pending litigation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Happy spring.